Okay. Okay, Chambers County Commissioners Court come to order. This is a regular meeting, even though it's an irregular meeting of the Chambers County Commissioners Court on Tuesday, fourteenth day of April two thousand and thirty AM, County courtroom, Annapolis, Texas. All the row, if you'll answer when I call your name, we'll make sure that you can hear us, precinct one, Jimmy Gore.
Yes, sir.
Precinct two, Mark Tice.
Yes, sir, Judge.
Precinct three, Gary Nelson.
I'm here.
And precinct four, Billy Combs.
I'm here too.
Okay, good. All right, we're gonna start off with the prayer and the pledges, and Ryan O'Zapple, uh, Chambers County Fire Marshal and Public Department Officer will lead us.
Thank you yet again for another wonderful day. We pray that you would be with all of our decision makers through these times and all of the persons in the public, especially uh, may be suffering difficulties because of this crisis, and we pray that you will help us emerge from this victorious and stronger than ever in Jesus.
Right, put this in place. Place the legions.
Legions to the flag, the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, Mary Beth Bess, Director of Health Services, gonna give us a quick update on COVID nineteen, so Mary Beth.
Good morning.
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 So the judge asked me to come just give an update on COVID nineteen and what we're doing in the county. And I hope by this update, I will answer some frequently asked questions as well as kind of go through the process of what to do. And so that's exactly what I'm gonna do. Uh, thank you first of all to everyone for doing your part in slowing the spread and helping us pass information out to the community members. It's good to see all of y'all this morning. And during this time where there's no vaccine and no treatment for COVID nineteen, what we have to do in the community is to uh, practice what's called non-pharmaceutical interventions, which is protecting yourself, which is good hand washing, not touching your face, your eyes, um, anywhere on your face, as well as wearing uh, face masks and uh, staying home, social distancing, and cleaning environmental surfaces, which is, I know what is everyone's doing, but we can't stop spreading that message. Um, what we're doing is working, uh, but you know, Texas is still in an acceleration phase, especially Houston and in our area. Um, you can see that in the numbers. Uh, when we look at other states around us, our partners, you know, to the east of us, Louisiana, it's heartbreaking, some of those numbers, New York, and we want to keep things where they are here locally, and so we all have to continue to do our part. Uh, investigating infectious and communicable diseases is what, part of what we do year round in the Health Department, but it's never to this magnitude. Um, so I say that because there's many unknowns. And these aren't just localized to us, it's, you know, statewide, nationwide. Uh, there's still a lot to learn about the disease and the disease process, and um, so that makes it uh, you know, on a day-to-day basis on the decisions that are being made, you know, some of these questions, we just have to take it day by day and how these decisions are made. Um, so Judge Sylvia kind of wanted me to walk you through the process of how like a case investigation is, um, what we do here locally, and then if you still have questions, we'll do our best to address those. Doing testing here at the Health Department, and we haven't, and most health departments don't. Um, some larger jurisdictions can partner with uh, some private entities to do some test. We just are unfortunate in that the, you know, we have not been allocated any supplies or PPE to facilitate a drive-through, uh, you know, testing site. But fortunately for us, uh, I mean, it's frustrating, but fortunately for us, the demand for testing has not exceeded our ability to facilitate that testing here locally, either at uh, you know, physicians' offices or in any of their emergency rooms here locally. So basically, if someone is experiencing mild, you know, cold symptoms, it may just be that a mild cold or allergies, and so we recommend that if it progresses from there to, you know, more severe symptoms, we recommend people call their primary care provider, uh, and then take direction from there, whether they want them to come in, and possibly if they meet the criteria, have testing done, or if the symptoms are more severe and they feel like something, they need to go to the emergency room, then we suggest calling ahead, going into the emergency room, and if the provider there feels like they meet criteria, then we help facilitate that testing. Um, once a test is collected, um, positive and negative results are called back to um, the residents of the community if it's a positive test. Um, what happens from there is, is that we start contact tracing, and what that means is that we identify the movements of the person as well as who they've been in contact with. And once that happens, we assign a level of risk, and that helps us identify if there's any community spread. Um, and then what we do is we follow that case until that person and the people that they're in contact with are uh, released from there, either home isolation or they're quarantined. Let's see, there are multiple testing sites in, uh, like drive-through testing sites in Harris County. Now, we're pushing for people to go to that, that route also, if they feel like it's appropriate for them. People can log on to readyharris.org and see if they qualify for symptoms, you know, qualify to have testing done that way as well. We are kind of urging people in our community as well, though, if you do feel like you want to go this route, please call us and let us know if you have been tested at one of those sites because they're in LA and asking getting those results. We know that we take care of things better here locally, and um, it's a regional problem in us, in our test results here locally. So if you get a positive test result and you have not heard from us here in Chambers County, uh, we want to know about that. If you have not heard from us, it means that we have not got your results yet. Um, there's more evidence of asymptomatic spread of disease, like forty-eight hours before you're symptomatic, and so that means you could be spreading disease, and so that's why we're still urging people to stay home, uh, practice, um, you know, those good measures that, that Judge Sylvia has put in place. Locally, um, we performed about three hundred and sixty-five tests, those include tests that providers and ERs have, um, done locally, as well as some of those throughout the um, the drive-through testing sites. We have twenty-nine confirmed cases, um, and there's ten that have recovered, and so the twenty-nine includes those ten that have recovered. We have two that are hospitalized, uh, four positive cases in East Chambers County, seven in Mid-Chambers County, and eighteen in West Chambers County. We update the dashboard on the website daily at five o'clock, and you can find that on the Chambers County website, if you go to the Chambers County website, you can click on the Health Department page. There's a dashboard that Mont Belvieu created and shared that with us, and we are so grateful to them for doing that. We also have an infographic that we updated, we have links to the CDC website, DSHS website, and we try to update that. The Health Department also has a Facebook page, we update that throughout the day, and that's how we also share information. And lastly, our goal is just to protect the public and to um, ease the burden on the healthcare providers and first responders, and that is our goal, and will continue to be our goal, uh, in slowing the spread, so thank you to everyone for what they're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Want to have some questions for Mary Beth at number four nine two six seven two seven three one? And any questions about the executive order, court orders in place, four nine two six seven twenty-four forty. And if you need to call Sheriff's Office on anything um, related to the executive orders, it's four nine two six seven twenty-five hundred. Understand this is gonna be challenging this morning, especially being the first one. I did my first probate hearing yesterday morning, uh, went very well. Uh, Sidney Price was guinea pig on it, and she had done some in Harris County, so, so it went well. Now, this is, I'm afraid, is the new normal, at least for the foreseeable future, and I'm asking y'all to bear with us as us old dogs do our best to learn new tricks. Speaking of old dogs, Mr. Fields now on with us.
Thank you.
You figured it out, huh?
Well, I decided uh, not to be impolite and be the only one who wasn't showing his face to everyone in the world.
All right, well, thank you. All right, let me start off by thanking our IT department, who's worked very hard to, to make this possible today. Um, our healthcare workers, Chambers County Health Department, and Emergency Management, uh, along with IT and Sheriff's Office and uh, Communications who make up the ELC, there's about a dozen of us here at the ELC. Uh, the county employees and citizens who have been really understanding and cooperative, and I do want you to know that we are praying for those unemployed, that are closed, we, we, we feel your pain and we're praying for you. And like my mother said last week, she said, I'm praying for y'all, and you know, God is still in control. Well, my mother, you know this exactly what she said. All right, we're gonna get started. It's a regular meeting agenda under administration. I had no citizens' comments come in, so one point one, discuss and consider proclamation, recognizing April twenty twenty as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Chambers County. Uh, you have a letter in your packet from Cheryl McDonald, President of Chambers County Child Welfare Board. Honorable judges and commissioners, please accept and read the proclamation, promoting child abuse prevention submitted by the Chambers County Child Welfare Board. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. The Chambers County Child Welfare Board holds an annual fundraiser, Blown Bling, which serves as our blue event for the month of April. Child Welfare Boards are asked to hold a blue event during the month of April due to recent mandates, due to recent mandates surrounding COVID nineteen, we had to cancel our event. We're submitting this proclamation to Commissioners Court to raise awareness concerning child abuse and also serve as our blue event for the month of April, and Commissioner Nelson, you'll read that proclamation, please.
Whereas, we had the responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Chambers County to help create healthy, safe and nurturing experiences for children, and whereas nearly two hundred thousand children in Texas are reported as abused or neglected every year, and whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults. And whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support they need and deserve, and deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas it is recognized that no one person can do everything, but that everyone can do something, and together we can create and change for the better. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, it be known that I, the Chambers County, County Judge Jimmy Sylvia, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Chambers County. And I urge all citizens to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive so that all children have the benefit of a happy, healthy, and safe childhood, as well as a month of remembrance for all children and families in Chambers County whose lives have been impacted by abuse and neglect, sign this day on the fourteenth of April twenty twenty.
Motion by Commissioner Nelson. Second by Commissioner Tice. Questions or comments, those in favor? Opposed, of course, there's none. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Nelson, we'll go to one, two. Discuss, consider proclamation, recognizing April twenty twenty as Fair Housing Month. I have an email from Samantha Humphrey. Uh, the General Land Office requires all counties participating in the CDBGDR funding to approve proclamations ensuring that fair housing in it initiatives will be followed. CDBGDR funds originate with the US Housing and Urban Development Department and are intended to improve the quality of life, minimize impact factors, and mitigate future disasters in low-income or historically underserved areas. The purpose of fair housing initiatives are to protect individuals from discrimination when renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, taking housing assistance, or engaging in other housing-related activities. These initiatives are aligned with HUD's goals and principles, and as participants in the CDBGDR program, we're expected to follow them. Commissioner Gore, would you read the resolution, please?
Whereas Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight has amended prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within the constitutional limits of fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but fundamental human concept, entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Chambers County, do proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in Chambers County, and do hereby urge all citizens of the, this locality to become aware of the support of the Fair Housing Law in witness. Wherefore, we're, we affix our signatures this date, April of fourteenth, uh, April twenty twenty.
Motion by Commissioner Gore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Combs, is that right, Billy? Billy, I got you right.
Yes, you did.
Okay. Uh, any questions, um, comments, or none of those in favor? Opposed, again, there's none, motion carries. All right, we're going financial, two point one. Discuss and consider Chambers County's enrollment and participation in a quick program, four-year, uh, year four, with regard to Arboretum of Winnie, Texas. Uh, Nathan Brandon Marks on the phone. Nathan, you there?
Yes, good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Can y'all hear Nathan, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, Nathan, go ahead, we're on your item, um, year four of the quick program.
Thank you, Judge. Um, as in years past, the Arboretum of Winnie has sought and is seeking um, our participation in the quick program. This is a partnership between the county and the Arboretum of Winnie. Uh, that has been longstanding, I think we've been involved with this for about five years. The enrollment period is approaching, and the deadline, I believe, is next week. Uh, we have to enroll if we wish to participate. As in years past, this works is the county, uh, invests money in the program, estimated to be in the ballpark amount of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then over the course of about twelve to eighteen months, we get repaid that amount plus an additional sum of about an eighteen percent return on investment uh, that we share in a fee split arrangement with the arboretum. Uh, today and years past, uh, we've always received our money back, and we've always received on average of about an eighteen percent return on investment. Uh, not only has this, uh, helped us financially, I guess you could say, but it has also, uh, been a tremendous help to the local arboretum, uh, nursing home in Winnie, and helped to, uh, improve the care for those. So with that said, I think we provided the court some background information. Uh, Nikki and I have been hard at work at this for about a month, asking various questions about the new program, and it looks like it's gonna remain the same as in years past. Uh, but uh, you know, the different metrics to measure the, the improved standard of care at the local nursing home, but for the most part, it's gonna be about the same, we can expect, uh, uh, similar patterns, similar programs is what we faced in years past. So with that, I just open it up for questions, Judge.
Okay, so, um, the eighteen percent we make on that money goes back into the Health Services Fund, which funds EMS, fire, public health, um, et cetera. So that money doesn't go in the general fund, it goes back into that Health Services. All right, questions for Nathan?
Judge, a move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Gore. No questions for Nathan, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, unanimous? Nathan, you did a good job explaining it, there were no questions. So we appreciate it, have a good, good day and be safe out there.
You too, thanks, Judge.
All right, we're going to, uh, excuse me, Personnel eighteen one, discuss considering approving Gabriel Smith full-time in April instead of May twenty twenty.
Move for approval? Second.
Motion by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Tice, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Make sure I, I heard your voice correctly. Uh, any questions? Or none of those, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. All right, now, on the consent agenda, I'm gonna go down the list and that, uh, start with precinct one. Um, Commissioner Gore, is there anything you'd like to pull off the consent agenda to discuss at this town? We try to keep this orderly, I know it's easy for us all to talk over each other, so.
Yeah, give me a second, Judge, to scan back through it, I had, I had.
Go ahead, all right, precinct two, Commissioner Tice. God, I can give you that too.
Yeah, yeah, move forward while.
Precinct three, Commissioner Nelson.
Uh, two, six, twelve, and forty-nine.
Let's wait, let's do them one at a time, okay, go ahead, two, six.
Two, six, twelve, and forty-nine.
No, uh, let's do them one at a time, go. Oh, you wanna do them now? Yes, yeah, we're on a consent agenda, so.
Um, I, on the payroll changes, did the, the auditor had several of those that they didn't, uh, didn't sign, is there a reason for that, are they working or what?
Uh, they have not been here, Gary, uh, that's the only thing I know, the reason that why they haven't signed them. You, you'd have to call the auditor and ask him whether you didn't sign them or why they weren't here.
Well, there were some that were signed, those reading, I was curious about it, I mean, if, I, I assume that that some of them, they just weren't available to sign them as they came out.
I'm not aware of any.
Normally, we give them an opportunity to talk about it, to read them, for not, reason for not signing it.
I'm, I'm not aware of any that, that were not budgeted, there wouldn't money in the budget for those. Um, Lauren, would you get Aaron, ask him about it?
Okay, that's, I mean, that's basically all I had for that, I just noticed there were some, and normally they don't sign them, because the money's not there.
Yeah, I know, okay, Aaron's gonna call Haley and ask her about that, we'll get an answer in just a minute.
But Judge, Judge, going back to, to precinct two, twelve was my question, so ask Aaron to let me know as well.
Okay, so, uh.
That's number six, I was thinking.
Number six?
That's payroll changes, correct.
Okay.
Go back to number two, but number two has to do with number twelve.
Right.
Okay. All right, so let's go to number twelve.
Yeah, I just, uh, Scott, you've, you've had input on this, is that correct?
Yes, and frankly, we worked on this, uh, last week, and one of the things that I.
About two days.
Yeah, for a couple of days, and I do know that one of the concerns, of course, is uh, the distinction between people who are working from home and people who are getting uh, disaster pay as they are assigned duties by the judge or specifically approved by him, so let me pull it back up. Um, one of the things that I will point out as some of the baselines here is, in paragraph four, it says, "All FSL exempt and non-exempt full-time employees assigned to disaster-related functions by the county judge during the declared disaster or emergency period," then it goes into A, B, C, and D. So, the goal had been to say for those people who are not assigned to disaster-related functions are to be receiving their normal, uh, uh, work pay while they're working from home. But, uh, you know, I, I do understand that some people have brought forth, uh, concerns about how it's worded. We can certainly change this language to, uh, be more clear if anybody felt that that was not sufficiently clear, that, uh, people who are not excused by the judge, um, from work, uh, pursuant to, uh, paragraph three, um, are expected to, uh, be working at one, uh, location or another for their normal duties. But the paragraph four, all of the disaster pay is specifically related to those who are assigned disaster-related functions by the judge. So, um, this language, I, as always, you can, you know, sleep on it or sleep a couple of times on an issue and come up with better ways to word it, but the way it's worded right now does say, uh, you know, people are getting their normal pay for their normal work, uh, by implication or inference, and people who are getting the, uh, additional pay uh, are, are being so, uh, paid due to, uh, sweat hours related to disaster-related functions. So, um, it is fine the way it is, but I certainly understand the desire for, uh, some to seek additional clarification, and we can, of course, uh, make those modifications, uh, as y'all see fit, so.
So, and I'll bear with it. Yeah. Yeah, Scott helped draft it. Um, and I'll remind you that af- after every disaster, we've had to go in and tweak the disaster pay policy ev- every time because we see issues with it, you know, do your best you can to put a policy in place, and then you have a pandemic, and who'd ever thought we'd be in the shape we are now? I mean, this is more directed toward a hurricane, a flood, so.
You know, I, I, with you, I, I, I understand the intent, but as it sounds right now with the pandemic, I think we really need to look at this and really modify it, I think it's great that we got it cut down to time and a half versus double time, but we literally cannot afford to keep this going very long. And, you know, the jobs that we're putting off and the things we're not doing simply because we can't afford the sweat pay, they're gonna get, we got, we gotta do them jobs anyhow, we're paying the people to stay at home and to do nothing. These jobs are not getting done, so in essence, we're gonna be paying double time to get them done.
They're supposed to be working at home, so it's not that they're not doing anything, so.
I understand, but it's very skeleton crew and we're only doing what we have, we have to.
Oh, I understand, and I know, and I understand what you're saying. Um, and it's very difficult to figure out how to, how do, how do, how do you make it fair to pay? Those are actually working sweat hours, and, and those who are staying at home and, and doing the work at home. Um, and, and right now, we have a contract with the, uh, uh, the CBA with the Sheriff's Office Association, uh, Chambers County Sheriff's Officers Association, and they graciously have gone from double pay down to time and a half. And, you know, if we went to straight time, you know, we'd have to ask them again to, uh, modify their contract for this, and we may wanna do that.
Yeah, either that, or even, you know, if we couldn't get them with them, we could do it a- and just make an exception. But, you know, I, I think we need to look at what it's really doing for our budget, and, you know, the taxpayers are ultimately paying this, and none of our taxpayers are paying their employees time and a half or double time, or, you know, none of the ones, the individuals, they're not getting that pay, I mean, I think it's great we've done it, but, you know, to go on extended a month, two months at a time, we can't afford it.
Yeah, and, and we've gotta continue to look at it, and what we've done is put, uh, and I know you know this, Billy, but we put, uh, two point two, almost two point two million dollars in capital projects, owned them until next year.
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay, we'll make sure you are. All right, anything else on twelve? Gary, what was your next one?
Uh, I was just gonna mention on forty-nine, that was about the ambulances. It reviewed, uh, we reviewed four, four, or a total, I guess, of four, and we decided to go with this two thousand and nineteen, four fifty for a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yes, sir.
And the other ones, they were five, two five fifties, four, four by fours. It didn't say, is this a four by four too, or do you know? It didn't say, is this a four by four too, or do you know the one that we decided to go with?
I'll get, let me get Ron, right, Aaron, you stay here. Lauren, will you get?
If you get Ron on there, maybe, you know, it's on the consent agenda for him to report on EMS. It would be nice to, for him to give a short.
That's fine. We're going to get him over here. Okay, so let's, let's go back to number six. Aaron's got an answer for you, Gary.
Yeah, so the ones that are signed were actually for last court. So the ones that are not signed, Haley just didn't receive those to review. So that's why they're not signed.
Okay. Got a question on six, if you could, Judge?
Got six, Commissioner Combs?
Are there any of the new hires that we're bringing in that could wait until after the, we've turned back to normal pandemic? I know a lot of them are with the Sheriff's Department and they probably need them, but I don't know if there's any that could wait.
I don't think I saw any of the new hires that weren't part-time. I mean, that were full-time. Were there a few? I mean, I know some of the sheriff's office was, but yeah, they're fully operational, so we've got to approve those. I don't, I looked through, I don't recall seeing any of the others that were full-time.
Treasurer's office.
Mm-hmm. Now, she's already been, that's already been filled. I mean, that was, that was approved court before last, oh, the last court, we didn't meet last time. And it was approved with open position, she just put a name in it. So that's what happened with that.
And maintenance as well?
Yeah, maintenance as well.
Right, Judge?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, that's all.
Anything else on six?
No, that's what, that's what I needed.
All right, Aaron, thank you. Hi, Ron's here, Gary, would you ask your question again?
Is that night, that two, twenty nineteen, F four fifty, is it four-wheel drive?
Yes, sir, they were four-wheel drive.
Okay, well, I didn't see it from the deal. So the other, the other three pieces, I mean, the five fifty, they had two five fifties and one three fifty, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And this, the nineteen is a brand-new one?
Yes, sir, it was brand-new and had three hundred and twelve miles on it.
Okay, so we got it, we really got a better deal. His other ones had, well, one of them had a hundred, but one had nine thousand, the other had twenty-four thousand miles. We got a better deal, getting a new one, correct?
Yes, sir. We went through multiple different offices. We tried to lease one, we tried to rent one. We tried to do at least an on-one, and every time we tried to do something like that, we ran into a roadblock. So the only way to get the ambulance to have for us to use for the COVID nineteen and for us to utilize it, we are, one of the problems we're going to have is getting the resources from Anawaka Treaty Bay titled over to Chambers County to get them added to our license. And so this allows us to have four licensed ambulances that are in operation. Have another ambulance that is sitting, that's wrapped, and be ready to be transporting a COVID nineteen patient without decon and having to spend an hour and a half, two hours to decon an entire ambulance. It's rapid to go, so if we have to pick up a COVID nineteen patient from the hospital or from a residence, that ambulance shows up, we put some bags on it, put the medics on it, transport. When it comes back, we take all the plastic wrapping out of the back of it, wipe it down, and it's done and deconbed in about thirty, forty-five minutes versus pulling everything out of the cabinets, wiping all the cabinets down, possibly wasting supplies depending on what supplies in the back of the truck get decontaminated and stuff like that. So this was the, the best option for, for what we had. And I went through multiple different vendors to get multiple different quotes, and those were the ambulances that were available for us to get right now. Now, we could have ordered an ambulance and probably spent a little bit more money than what we did, but it would be six, seven months down the road and it didn't, it didn't sit the needs we had for it right now.
And Gary, we have, we, we have moved some COVID nineteen positive patients.
So we're lining it with plastic as best we can, and then we take the plastic out, is that how that works?
Yes, sir. We tape all the cabinets and we line the ambulance with plastic. The ambulance is completely stripped bare minus, minus some small PPE that's in the back. If we have a patient to transport, they take the bags and the monitor, which meet all of our state minimum requirements for the state of Texas. Those get moved over onto that ambulance and that ambulance is used to transport the patient. And it cut down almost an hour and a half to two hours on our decon time by transporting those patients versus having to basically decon an entire stocked ambulance.
Those fogger deals don't work for that purpose. The foggers.
We've looked at.
Looking around with these foggers.
Yeah, we've looked at multiple different options. They've got, there's some, some stuff that was designed by NASA that me and Bill are looking into, that some of the other EMS services around us are using them. It's basically a, an ozone emitter and it basically kills bacteria and viruses. So we're looking at purchasing some of those through COVID nineteen for the ambulances. We're just trying to get more information on before we pull the trigger on something that's fairly new. But it's got, it's got all the white papers and everything to go with it, and we were looking into those. And those also get rid of carcinogens too, so house fires, stuff like that. It's a really good technology and the lady's local out of Beaumont, she designed it. They're used on the NASA Space Shuttle, so I'm pretty sure it's pretty good technology. We're just trying to make sure we go through all of our, our rounds before we do anything like that. And that will help out some too, because they can basically turn that on after a call, leave it on for thirty minutes, and it's supposed to decontaminate the entire ambulance for viruses and bacteria and stuff like that. So we're looking at, into that too. We just, that's something else. Even if we did order it, it's still two to three weeks out, so it didn't kind of solve the problem right away.
Okay, Ron, you had a, an agenda item that reported on the ambulance. Do you have anything else you'd like to say at this time?
I just want to say thank you guys for the support through this entire process. Especially thank you to Maze Middleton and Brian Bavin for making some phone calls to kind of get our license expedited. We had to bring all of our medics in early and we were staffing Anawaka EMS and Treaty Bay EMS to make sure that those ambulances were staffed with our full-time medics until we got our license. Now that we have our license, we've got fully staffed, full-time employees that are here, which is something that we've never had during a disaster before on any other hurricane. So we've got two ambulances that are in service twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Two responders are in service to pull up third ambulance. And we've got on-call staff to pull up the fourth ambulance if we ever need it, which is something we haven't had in previous disasters, so it's been pretty good. And it's helped out a lot. And all of those guys left full-time careers at other places to come work for us in Chambers County. So we put together a really good team with really experienced medics, and I think it's a great thing for Chambers County. And again, thank you for all the support through this process. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of questions and hurdles, and I'm trying to answer as many as possible for you guys. If you have, if there's any questions, like I said, always reach out to me and I'll answer them to the best of my ability. And if I don't know the answer, I'll find one, I'll find it for you.
Yeah, Ron? Gary, if you'll recall, was the reason we went, we wanted to go to the, to Chambers County EMS is we had a bunch of part-time workers that, like we have now, were called back to their, where their full-time job was, and we, we lost. So this is good that right now we have those folks in place. And when, when we purchased, when we agreed to purchase other ambulances three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, this, this was a fluid, fluid event. I mean, it still is. But it really was so at that time. I mean, it changed daily, hourly, so that's the reason for getting it. Billy, did you guys something?
Hey, Ron, not on that.
Okay.
Hey, Ron.
Did you guys something?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, just emphasize how a lot of our paramedics around here, that their employers were denying them from working in any second jobs. I mean, so this Chambers County EMS has really been a great benefit for the citizens of Chambers County.
Yeah, so multiple, multiple ambulance services, especially the government-operated ambulance services because of workers comp and other things, restricted all their employees from working full-time job or part-time jobs. That affected all, all three part services in Chambers County, even affected Mountain Bellevue as well, where they lost all of their part-time staff because of, not all of it, but a good majority of the part-time staff because of those policies that have been in place. We actually are putting in the same policy in place for Chambers County EMS with the exception of if those guys are working in Winnie or those guys are working in Mountain Bellevue, but they cannot work for another service outside of Chambers County because I'm not going to take away staff from other services that we have in the county. But we implemented the same thing because we want to make sure that they come to work, they're healthy. And if there is an exposure, we know where that exposure comes from, to track that for public health reasons, for workers comp reasons and things of that nature. And that, that hit us pretty hard that week of the twenty-third, which is right around the same time that the full-time employees started. That hit us really hard because we were staffing three or four of our full-time medics at Anawaka EMS to keep the trucks in service. And then our full-time medics that work for us were pulling sixty or seventy-two hours on their off time in Treaty Bay to keep that ambulance in service, which is why it was very imperative that we got that license to alleviate that problem anymore, so that our guys weren't working themselves into the dirt trying to make sure these ambulances stayed in service.
All right, anything else from Ron?
Yeah, I, I do have a quick question. Are we still staffing some people for Winnie still?
We, basically, we have some of our guys that work there part-time. And what he's been doing is, is he needs to, he shuts down a responder or Robert's been working. I think he's been working forty-eight, seventy-two hours a week on the truck to help cover those holes. We haven't seen anybody over there in the last couple of weeks, though. We're just basically, some of our guys are working an additional twenty-four a week that they usually wouldn't work in Winnie to help cover those holes. But they're being paid by Winnie when they're working in Winnie, if that makes.
All right. Hey, I just want to thank you guys. I, I know y'all were out there on the front lines and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Billy.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, and nothing else for Ron? Okay, Ron, thanks. All right, Gary, did we get to all yours you wanted to discuss?
Yes, yes, sir. I pretty well cleared everything up.
All right, back to Jimmy, Commissioner Gore, did you have?
No, Gary covered mine.
All right, Commissioner Tice, anything else?
Actually, after going through there, I had some old notes at home your honor, and no, we covered it a while ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Combs, last but not least.
Yes, sir. Item number twenty-five. I, Mike, about this yesterday, actually, the ten thousand nine hundred and two dollars was approved at our last court. And that was actually misquoted. His agenda item for that item should have read, discuss and consider making repairs to the Beach City Volunteer Fire Department. Made a mistake last court, need a total of twenty-four thousand forty-six dollars for repair work, not ten thousand nine hundred and two. Therefore, need an additional thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars for Arnold Construction.
Okay, well, sent to us at thousand nine hundred and two, so Mike needs to resend that. Oh, I see, and it goes on down. So the bottom is twenty-four oh four six. Billy, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, it would be, it should be thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars, not ten thousand nine hundred and two.
Okay.
Can we, can we make that motion? When we do that, can we make it for thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four? Or will it need to be resubmitted, Scott?
You can approve what, the changes that y'all have made here in court.
Go ahead and make the motion, Billy. Well, you want to make them? And we'll just take twenty-five by itself. Motion by Commissioner Combs?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tice, and that amount was, tell me again, Billy?
Thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four. Okay, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. All right, Commissioner Combs?
Okay, on item number twenty-eight, the agenda item reads correct. However, the support information that was put with it is not correct. It is the wrong support information in your package. So we will be approving exactly what it says, a variance for a ten-foot side lot. Corey had actually, what, what this is, this is where you've got two streets within a subdivision that you're on a corner lot. And our current ordinance, as it reads, is a twenty-five foot setback off of a street. However, these are not main corridors, which is what is really, you want your front setback. But if the house is facing one road, then the other side lot per the ordinance, the way it's written, twenty-five foot also. So this actually corrects that and allows it to be a ten-foot on one, where the side of the house is, and a twenty-five foot in the front of the house, so.
Okay, so, so the way the item reads is good. Although we're pretty much on the agenda. Okay, good.
Yeah, the information in there is wrong.
Okay. All right, what else, Commissioner Combs?
I think that's it.
Okay, so anything else on the consent? There's none, or is there any motions approved, consent agenda?
No move, Judge. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tice, second by Commissioner Gore. Questions, comments, those in favor? Motion carries, no executive session. And I'm, I will ask all the department heads that are listening in. Make sure you give us a really good explanation of what your item is. Just put something on the agenda. We need, we need a summary and a recommendation from you. And that'll make things go a whole lot easier. Overall, I thought it went really well this morning, though. And I appreciate y'all bearing with us and all those. And who would have ever thought that our FEP department? Gary, do you know what FEP was when we created them? Health Emergency Preparedness would have been needed as bad as they are right now. Folks are doing an excellent job for us, so thank you. Thanks for being on today. You guys be safe. Godspeed.
Thank you, Judge.
We're done.